To order, could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our 4:20 meeting. And can everybody hear us out on Zoom? It's clear out there? It's good?
Yes.
Thanks. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our April 6th Select Board Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Ends the motion and leaves the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors? Anybody have anything on the minutes?
I wasn't here, but on page 634, line 34, that first part of the sentence doesn't make sense. So it just needs some kind of editing, doesn't it?
In relation to the seminar that only Chester attended. Is that the sentence? In relation to the seminar?
It actually does make sense if you were here for that comment. And no offense that you weren't here, but I mean...
It was the only town.
Yeah, Chester.
The only town.
It said Julie, but it said Chester.
There were other people there, but...
Only Chester attended it?
Right.
Out of, okay.
Yeah.
The rest of the town could, the rest of the cities could have.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I clarified it.
Yeah.
I am too.
Anything else? You want that clarified then? Just so it's Chester, I mean...
That's up to you. Yeah, it's up to you guys. You were at the meeting. It didn't make sense to me.
That only Chester was the only town that attended? Because there were a lot of other people on it. It's just Chester was the only town.
Okay.
Town representation.
That's fine. Anything else on it? Anybody else have anything else? Any? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding something that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Leslie?
Surprise.
Just come on up to the mic, please. Just give us your name on there, Leslie.
Okay. First, I don't want to be hunching over.
Does it bend up for you or not?
Yeah, it should.
Way better, thanks. No, no, that's good, that's good. Gives me some to strive for. My name is Leslie Thorson. Dear Chester Select Board and community members, good evening. Thank you for your service. I am here for one reason: Police Advisory Committee. I have lost count as to the amount of times I have asked the Select Board and Julie Hans, the town manager, to begin this process. Last January, February, I was told after the town budget is passed. Then I was told after a police study was conducted. This year, I am told after the police union contract is finalized. It is time to put this on the Select Board agenda. Burlington, Barry, Bennington, and Montpelier are some of the towns that already have an oversight or advisory commission. The Montpelier Police Review Committee published a comprehensive and professional report on strategies to improve transparency and accountability, which include sharing of data, fair and impartial policing assessment, officer misconduct, and the prevention of the purchase of militarization equipment for use by the police department. Also, they discussed increased investments in community support programs, such as police-embedded social workers. Last year, our town paid a $50,000 settlement to a man who was pulled over for simply driving while black. Was the Chester Police Department accountable for breaking the fair and impartial policing state law? No, they were not. Arnie apologized, and no internal complaints were filed against the two police officers involved. One of those officers, the chief, failed to report this use of four-stop to the state. This is one example we, the public, know about because the Vermont Human Rights Commission found the Chester Police Department had, in fact, violated this state law. We now have a holding cell in our quaint town. No state law exists for municipal holding cells. How do we know the Chester Police Department is following their own holding cell policy? I would hate to see a holding cell incident that costs our town another $50,000, or worse, costing someone their life. A full-time officer is retiring this summer. An advisory committee could be part of an interview process. Or maybe we spend the money on a police-embedded social worker. We have a right to know what the police in this town are doing. Are they meeting the current needs of our community? Are they following the law? Are we helping or hurting the young people in this town? Are we helping or hurting our folks with substance abuse disorder or mental health conditions? It is time to put this on the Select Board agenda. Tell me what I should do to make this happen. I am formally requesting this to be put on the agenda before this summer. If I need to collect 300 and something signatures to get a vote, or whatever we have to do, just let me know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Ashley.
I know it has been kicked around a little bit in the past, Leslie, but I've had this discussion with our town manager in the last two weeks. It will be coming up.
Can we have a timeframe? Can we have a timeframe?
Not an exact one yet, but it will be.
Is it going to be in the year 2022?
I'm sorry, Leslie. I'm not going to talk about it right now.
Can I let you know some things that have happened?
Sure.
So I have finally heard back from Jim Baker. The holdup with the assessment is availability, and I want somebody that is good. I'm not, I don't want to just settle for who we get to do this critical assessment of the police department. Jim Baker, he has done Springfield, he's done several in the state of Vermont. He is freed up. He will be starting probably the end of May with that assessment. Him and I have had lengthy conversations over the past year about what the assessment will look like. So I did hear back from him at the beginning of the week. We can do one of two things. I mean, I think it's wise to wait until that assessment is done. That is my, that is my opinion. The board may disagree with that. Jim certainly feels that it would be good to go through this process because it is a community process and see where that leads. When you set up an advisory committee, we need to set up the parameters of what we want that committee to be accomplishing. There's a lot of small towns that have these. They're dead. They're not working anymore. They were not set up well. That's the one thing I have been cautioned about. When you do this, make sure that you do due diligence about the roles that you want this committee to play. It's critical to its success, and I want it to be successful and effective. The one way that we are starting this, Public Safety Chiefs and I have been talking about this for a couple of months now, but we have set a date, May 26th. I was going to bring this up under new business tonight, but May 26th at 7:00 at the Public Safety Building, we are going to have the first of a series of community forums where the community can come talk to, fire, police, and ambulance, about what they would like to see from those services in this town. That is the start of this. And that was by recommendation of Jim a few months ago. And so we wanted to wait until it was warmer, we could be outside, we're going to open the bays, take equipment out, take equipment out of the bay, so there can be fresh air. So I don't know what COVID is going to be doing, so we wanted it to be outside. And not here at Town Hall, but there in that space for if people have questions. So that is coming again, was going to be announced under new business. So there are things happening. I know you feel like it's taking forever. It is. Government moves very slowly, but I want to make sure that it's done well. If the board wants to rush and do it now, that is certainly the prerogative of the board.
Can I make a suggestion that we have it...
Do you want me to close that?
Pardon me? No, no, I'm fine. I like it, thank you. Can we make, can I make a suggestion that we put it on old business? And just every month, every other, or every meeting, just have updates as to where we think we are?
Sure. I won't have anything until Jim starts, which won't be until...
But if we're doing this May 26th, you could report that we did it when...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, 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 sure.
Those kind of things. And maybe it's not under old business as the Police Advisory Committee, but it's under old business in another...
Sure.
...frame so that we are updating the public.
Sure.
Under future agenda items and items for discussion, we can have a brief discussion about our role in this and what timeframe we want it to take. Julie has given us some good suggestions. If we have some other ideas on how quick or how slow or how it should happen or when it should happen, we can give that a brief review and put it on a future agenda to see if we want to do anything different or like that. I mean, we can have a discussion just about how quick we go forward, never mind what we're going to be trying to do also and stuff. So we could figure that out, I'm sure.
Can I make a question to Julie?
I would, Julie, I would ask you and every member of the board to please take a chance to look at the Montpelier Police Review Committee. It's very professional. I really don't appreciate comments that sort of belittle a police advisory committee and how they are failing in our state. That's just, I don't know if it's true or not, but that's kind of inappropriate.
Well...
You know, it's an inappropriate comment. Like, we need to move forward, read this Montpelier Police Review Committee.
I certainly will. Where my statement is coming from, Leslie, is having talked to town managers in several towns in our state.
Exactly, right. To protect the town.
Who are, who are letting me, giving me advice and letting me know of the ways that they failed to encourage us to do it well. That's, that's what that is about. It's not about belittling anything, Leslie. I want the committee, but I want it done well and effective in our town. I don't want to make some of the mistakes that some other towns have made. That's where that statement is coming from.
Well, I think until we take some steps into looking on, making some steps into doing it, we're not going to be moving forward. If we're just talking about it's not a good idea or all these places that fail, that's not moving it forward.
That's not what I'm saying.
What? This is the...
I'm done, I'm done, Arnie.
Yeah, and I'm done too. I am done too. Done.
I think we, as a board, all want what's best for this town, and we approach things in different ways and with different expediency, but I think what we all desire is what's right in our hearts and what's good for the town.
And I'm not belittling anything. I'm the one who wants the committee.
And nobody, nobody, I don't think...
But I want it effective and well.
Well, and I think the fact that you have it already set up, I think sometimes this...
This is in the, all this is in the works.
It's going to start on March 26th.
So I think we should move on.
May 26th, sorry.
Thank you.
Was a hand up out on, on our Zoom audience? Is there still? Is Jay?
Joy Slaughter.
Joy? Or is that just a cursor?
That's the cursor, I'm sorry. There we go.
I was just going to ask that the board please keep their microphones closer, Heather especially, and Arnie.
Thank you.
That's pretty close. We'll try. Are there any other citizens' comments? Is that a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll go on to old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. The Pinnacle, we haven't heard about this for quite a while, but Green Mountain Power reached out. Matt and I met with Green Mountain Power and Chester Electric regarding the work at the Pinnacle. Their work is scheduled to be done late summer, early fall, and the project does involve burying the power. I don't know if everybody is familiar with the project, but it burying some power up there at the Pinnacle. And because our, the power to our pool house has some funky two-phase, three-phase stuff going on, they have agreed, they want to get rid of that, so they have agreed to redo the power that goes to the pool to get Phase 1, to which point Steve from Chester Electric will pick up, do what needs to be done on our end. He's going to get me a quote on what our cost will be for that. In addition, there was an agreement made a few years ago with Green Mountain Power that they would install two poles for us for lighting, one at the ice rink and one at the tennis courts so that the tennis courts can be lit at night. So they are planning to do those poles for us, and again, Steve will be getting us a cost on what the electric is to actually install the lights.
This was all related to the upgrades of power that go up Lover's Lane, where they're going to be switching a lot of the poles out of the woods and putting them on the side of the road. And the conversations were about all the power being buried that were going to be in that area to keep it, because of the looks of it, to keep it all buried and it's safer and easier to deal with and stuff. It was a couple of years ago that they came before the board asking permission for all this, and I think it's finally starting to happen.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
Is there opportunity for additional light poles if wanted?
So one of the things that I didn't put in the memo, I didn't know, because I don't know what the cost is going to be, but Steve is getting us a cost, is also lighting one of the Little League fields there. There's been a need, there's been a request for that, a desire for that. He is going to get me a cost on those. That would be needing the poles and the lights. There is an option, I mean, Green Mountain Power might be willing to do more. We would pay for them. They are giving us two for free. But there is some other things that we're looking at. We'll kind of be coming back with a full proposal to the board of everything we're looking to light. And what we do light, we're looking to put on a timer system so that you go to the pole, you set it for an hour, and then you can have the lights for an hour, then it shuts off if you want longer than that. That way, they're not on all night. We need to be real careful about how they're facing for residential use, you know, all those types of things. So we'll be coming back with a full proposal once Steve gets some numbers together. Yeah. Delinquent taxes. There is a new Vermont Housing and Finance Authority program that's been funded through federal ARPA funding that is helping homeowners, it needs to be a primary residence, and there is an income threshold that you need to look at, but it helps to pay delinquent water, sewer, and delinquent tax payments, as well as mortgage payments and other things. But Chester, I've enrolled us as a receiving town. We do have several people already that are participating in the program, which is great. So we're just trying to get the word out to as many people as possible. We've been sending the flyer in delinquent water bills, delinquent tax bills. So if you know of anybody that is in need of assistance, that is a great program. We have let people know. They're welcome to, you know, for some of our people that are not quite so savvy, it's all online. They are welcome to come into Town Hall. Debbie, Amy, or myself will help them get registered. Town Office zoning listers have now officially moved into their new space. Stop-in looks great, Steve. This is a huge benefit of having a facilities director who is also a contractor and an electrician on our water staff. That whole thing was done during work hours with no additional expense. It's awesome. Looks amazing. They'll now be getting the front room, which will be converted, like I've said, back to the downstairs conference room like it used to be years ago. So Steve and Wayne will be working on that in the next few weeks. Update on the highway garage. You can probably see the new siding is up, or is going up on the highway garage. Looks great. If you haven't been inside the building, you know, stop over, tour it, it really looks nice.
It looks professional.
It looks very professional. The guys are very happy. Project looking to conclude mid-May, so they're wrapping up soon. And then the academy roof, Doxy Roofing, will be here tomorrow to remove the slate on the west slope, and then they'll be here the first week of May to get that slate replaced. That was a grant-funded project. While they are here, Steve has talked to them. They're going to meet, there's a couple of slipped slates on Town Hall, on the library, on the tomb, and on the pool house. So while Doxy is here, Steve will be working with them to do minor repairs on those existing buildings.
Julie, do you know what's happening to the old slates?
The old slates we hang on to, the ones that still have value, we keep, like we did here. So like the repairs to the pool house, those will likely, will take good slate that is still left, put it up. We use it for repairs around town, basically. The other thing that's happening is the cemetery shed needs to be a little bit bigger, so Steve is going to be building an addition, a small addition on to that, and so the slates will be used to cover that as well. But we hang on to them, we keep them.
They're a good resource.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All my slates.
Yeah, we keep them. Yeah.
And one of the other advantages of having a contractor, carpenter, on the payroll is he's also going to be working at the Brookside Trail, on the bridge there also.
Yes, he will be helping, he'll be helping John write. The two of them together will be building that. Steve drew up the design for the boardwalk, and him and John will be working together to construct it.
It seems like with all the buildings that the town has, we can keep someone busy full-time.
Oh, easily, oh, yeah.
For a long time.
Oh, yes. Great addition. Very happy. That's all I have for old business.
Anybody else have any old business, any comments, questions, concerns? One question that I had was, I know there was talk in town about a dog park. Is there anything more on that, or is there a group of people that are...
There's a group that's working on it. I believe we're just waiting on some numbers. They had a fencing choice that they ran by me, which I thought looked very nice. It was a split-rail fence with, what is that?
Chicken wire.
Chicken wire, but it was a little bit nicer than chicken wire. Yes, I forgot, I don't know what they call that, on the backside of it. So it looked a little nicer than just chain-link fence. So I think they're, I'm waiting on numbers, and I believe they'll be before the board with their presentation.
About locations?
Yeah, locations.
They have, all I've heard is that they have four that they're looking at.
Are they on town property?
Yes, they're all town property.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all town property. I know that one of them is Canal Street. I know that one of them is Route 11 West, the property that we got from during Irene. I know those two, for sure. But there were two others that they were going to throw in there, and I'm not 100% sure where those are. But they'll be coming with a presentation.
Good.
Maybe a good use of ARPA funds.
Who is on that board, do you know? Do you know, or like, is there a lead person or...
There is one lady, I think it's Risa, that Matt is working with, and Matt, and then a couple other people. Do you know Lee?
Stephanie Whitney Payne, I believe, is very involved with that.
Yeah, I know a few of them have talked to Lee about it. Those are, those are the only ones I know of, but I believe there's a handful that are working on it.
Good, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else? Old business? Next item is our Local Cannabis Control Commission discussion. I think it was a couple of meetings ago that we decided that we were going to have a Local Cannabis Control Commission for our town, and there are some details that we have to work out as far as who the members are going to be. Because we have enough interest from citizens of the town, it doesn't have to be a strictly Select Board group. I think it would be nice to have maybe one or two people from the Select Board on the group just to relay the information back to the board as it goes forward and maybe to help out as far as the connection with the town. But at this time, there's, I think there's four names of citizens that would, that volunteered to be on that commission. We've gotten some information back, some relatively new guidance information from the State Cannabis Control Board, but it really isn't much different than what we've already known as far as powers and what they can or can't do and what, you know, as far as authority goes. It still seems pretty limited as far as anything with teeth on it, and I think that was specifically made that way by the state as, when this law was passed, that it would not be treated any different than any retail establishment. In your package, you've got some, a sample resolution for a Local Cannabis Control Commission. That was given some guidance on how we should word this and how we should make it legal as far as the makeup goes, and as far as some of the questions that have to be answered are the term lengths. The Select Board would do the appointing of them, but basically it would be the size of the board, the makeup of the board, and the term lengths on it and stuff. So you have that in your, in your packet. Most of it's pretty straightforward. It's a sample resolution that we would have to adopt to formalize the board itself. Some of the questions that came up is, that come up are, how do we, what do we want to do with the board as far as the makeup goes? And I would entertain some comments or some concerns or people's thoughts on how we should go about this and what the board should be made up, made up of.
I, I think that there have been a few people who've stepped forward and said they would like to be part of that, and there was an example in something I read about perhaps two Select Board members and then some others from the community who would like to do that. And so from what I could understand, that makes sense if that's the route we want to go.
Do we need to put that much, I guess my question is, do we need to put that much definition to who makes up the board? And my only comment would be, there's certainly a lot of folks expressing interest right now, but if we say that only two Select Board members can be on it, if in five years, we're kind of at a point where we are with some of the other positions in town, are we then limiting ourselves on being able to fill that board?
I would think that if we come up to an issue like that in the future where we can't staff the board, we could change the resolution and return it back to a Select Board group if we had to. I kind of think it's important that at this point that we do, if we do have the enthusiasm and the people that are volunteering to make sure we include them.
I completely agree.
But to your point, I agree.
I just don't want to limit us in the future and...
I would think that with the Select Board, we'd still be able to change whatever resolution that we put forward to return it back to the Select Board or to do whatever tweaks it might need. And I would think that would include the makeup of the board and the size of the board for that matter also. I don't know if there's a minimum amount, whether it has to be at least three, hopefully an odd number, but at least three. We're hoping for five and take it from there.
I think you can easily say, be it further resolved, that the local commission will be comprised of, and you can say, members of the legislative body and members of the community.
Right.
You could just simply leave it like that.
And that's kind of where I was going with it.
And not say a number.
And that way, we can say, hey, maybe we'll keep it at two at this point, but that just allows us to...
And there'll be people who probably want to step off, and somebody might want to step up back on.
I would hope people continue to want to be involved. It's just...
Well, and it would be nice to interview like we do for the other boards, to appoint, before we appoint people. To get a gist of, you know, points of view and why they want to be on it.
So one of the big questions is, as far as the Select Board goes, one member, two members?
You have four community members interested at this time. There's been a fourth that has reached out to me.
Okay. So, I mean, we can just, well, because if we leave the wording to give ourselves a little leeway, like you were saying, Ben, at this point, we could just do one, and then in the future, if it comes up or whatever, we could actually add, you know, a second one pretty easily. What happens if we go to the third person, and then it just changes the dynamics of that committee, because then it's a Select Board meeting?
Yeah, so this is a town, so, so this is a town board, and it would be subject to open meeting laws, warnings, minutes, all of that stuff, right?
I would think that they are, yeah.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
I think from my perspective at this point, we have a variety of opinions about this issue on the board right now, so I would suggest a minimum of two, possibly one from each side of the issue. That way, we're not, not that there's a lot of teeth or there's a lot of decisions that the Cannabis Control Commission is going to make, but I think that fair representation should be considered.
So we could get this resolution fine-tuned so it applies to Chester.
Right.
More specifically, three-year terms, two-year terms, you know, how do you want to deal with that end of it? Or just terms that are non-ending until they're either removed or... Or just terms that are non-ending until they're either removed or they resign?
I think term limits are a good thing. And I think the longest it should be, this is just top of my head feeling, not supported by any evidence whatsoever. But three years is the longest, I would say. I mean, the select board has some one year, some three year. I don't know if we want to confuse it like that. The planning and the DRB, are they all three years?
They're all three year now. We'll have to alternate them going in, like, it's like of the five, you know, you need to appoint a couple for two, a couple for one, a couple for two, one for three, and then they get into a cycle, but.
Well, to my way of thinking, three years is the longest. I'd recommend doing that.
So for the select board member on that commission, would that be a yearly appointment?
Maybe your, maybe your select board members are your one year because you guys rotate.
Yeah, and also if somebody who is up for one year term, in for one year term and doesn't get reelected, then what? You know, we start over, so.
Well, and I think the select board, you know, we step on, like, there's people that do certain things and then come back to the board. I see it like that too, that if it got too much for somebody, someone could come back to the board and say, okay, you know, I think it would be time for someone else to jump in. That's how I see it.
I think select board for one year would be appropriate.
So two one-year terms and the other three three-year terms.
I think that makes sense.
And we could stagger those as we go forward.
Okay.
I think those are the only, those were the big questions as far as the resolution goes. Everything else is pretty straightforward. They're just referencing all the state statutes that apply and what gives us the authority to do this and how it works.
Do you want to do interviews at your next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll get the document tuned up with the details specific to Chester. And then we could formally adopt this resolution at our next meeting with the wording and everything else. And then becomes a question, volunteers from the select board to be members on it.
So do you mind my asking who the fourth person is?
Susan Bailey.
Okay.
So if we have no volunteers, we're going to have four citizens. Anybody up for being on the local commission?
I mean, I'm happy to be on it.
Is it still open for people to?
Yeah, we're going to do interviews at the next meeting, so.
Yep.
And you know.
That'd be great, Lee, if you would do that.
I'd be up for it as well.
What's that?
I'd be up for it as well.
And do you both represent, like Lee was saying, different points of view?
Different people.
Yeah.
I think we both have the same general wants of the town of Chester, but I think we probably have a little different approach. But I also think the, I think the, my opinion going into this is that, yes, it was not by a huge margin, but the town did vote to proceed with it. And we just need to figure out a way to do that that works for everybody, so.
My personal opinion is that based on what I'm reading from the state, the State Cannabis Control Commission, that this board or commission will have very few responsibilities and zero teeth.
I don't disagree with that.
But it's a meeting of the minds.
They can advise the select board on actions that they possibly could take, whether there's authority somewhere else that could work that way.
Yeah.
I mean, I still think it's important that people be involved with this process.
Yeah.
And that they're part of what's going on because it is something that's so new. Things might come up that nobody was expecting. And when those issues come up, I think it's important to have as many people involved from as many different perspectives as you can to look at things. I think you two guys would be great.
Yeah, I'd say thank you.
Yeah.
I'd be happy that you two did it.
And how many people did you say from the community are?
We're thinking five to start with.
Five total, so three from the community.
Well, and if we had another.
I think it should be an odd number.
If people hear it tonight and decide to want to jump in, I'd be open to having it be a seven-member board. And you can set it up so that you have to have the quorum to vote on things if you're going to, but.
You could make it flexible as far as that goes.
Yeah.
I still think we need to define the role, the specific duties and role of this commission before we start saying, oh, we need seven or 10 or nine or whatever. So my.
Just to be helpful and then further.
Well, yeah.
So do you think we should interview as soon as next meeting?
Well, as soon as our next meeting, sure, yeah. Because as I said in our last meeting, this issue is being pushed on the town of Chester. And I think the sooner we get the pieces in place that we need to have, the better. My opinion.
Can, just for clarity, if we could make sure, can two members of that board be involved in the interviewing and decision-making of the rest of that makeup?
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, you probably shouldn't be.
I would say that would be.
I don't know.
Although maybe, maybe, you know what, we'll just get clarity.
If we just ask, I think that's a good one.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I'll just get clarity.
That's a good question.
Okay.
Do you want a way to volunteer? I'm just kidding.
I mean, if it doesn't work that way, then there's only three of us. And then it's not, it's limited in the outlook of what people have or, you know, opinions and ideas also. So either way you go, it seems like it's not going to quite be exactly as fair as it should be, I think.
I don't know that there's a conflict of interest.
There's no personal gain.
I think we're looking, reading into this a little too much.
Yeah, I think we are too.
But I will get clarity just in case.
I think that's.
I have a question. Do you want resumes ahead of time or anything like that?
Good question.
Susan, typically, Susan, I'll be sending an email out to the four of you tomorrow. But typically what we do is a letter of interest explaining why you want to be on the committee and, yeah. But I'll be sending an email out to the four of you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Susan, good question.
That's great.
All right. So I think we're okay with that. We know where we're heading and what we have to do to get to the formal document. Anybody else have any other questions or concerns before we move on from?
Are we going to have a draft of that formal document at our next meeting?
The resolution?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I got it this afternoon at like 3:30, yes.
There's extra ones there. Anything else on the Local Cannabis Control Commission? Any other questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas? We kind of know where we're going, we know our consensus of how we want it to look and.
An odd number, I think, is really important. An odd number of people on the commission is really important.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'd like to see the proposed resolution. It's not, I don't see the packet uploaded. I'm not sure when that's been happening, but I looked before the meeting and didn't see it there.
I'm not, it might be on the State Cannabis Control Board website because it's under their guidance document where they provided a sample resolution. That's what we've been looking at.
Okay, sorry, I was referring to the packet for tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Those have started to be uploaded, but it doesn't seem like it's consistent yet. I know it's a new habit.
Yeah, yeah, the girl who does that was out Friday and then we have, the office has been closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week, so she, yeah.
So once it's uploaded, maybe you could shoot me an email and just let me know and I'll download it from there.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, anything else on it before we move on? Next item on our agenda is public nuisance ordinance discussion. In your packet, we've gotten quite a few examples of nuisance ordinances across the state covering a wide range of topics. Going through all this and reading all the different ordinances and all the different towns and what their takes and what their issues were and what they were doing, I came up with the question, what is our goal in this? I mean, what are we looking for? Or are we trying to address a problem? Or are we trying to address a future problem? I mean, I couldn't come up with an answer exactly on why we are looking at this at this point. And I'm wondering if somebody had some ideas or some thoughts on this.
I will say the one thing I thought of immediately, and I read these that pertain to some other towns in the state of Vermont, but was what was, what Preston went out. And I was thinking public nuisance in the respect of 106 and 10 and 11 West and the Andover Road and the Chester. And so that's where I was going with it, thinking, oh, this is great. But my question was, who's in charge? And what are the, you know, does the state have any piece of this? Is this strictly a town? If it's that indeed, if we're talking indeed of those residences or those properties that were visited and had letters written to by Preston. I was going to have him come and talk to us.
I think why Preston was looking at public nuisance was not because of that.
Okay.
I think the reason that got brought up was what is allowed under the cannabis laws?
Oh, it has still.
Or that you can regulate under zoning or public nuisance. So there were a few conversations brought up at select board meetings about, do we want to look at what is available for regulation under public nuisance? The properties that you're speaking of are covered under our salvage yard ordinance.
Okay.
So they're covered. We have the authority we need under that ordinance.
And so, I mean, I've had several calls from several residents of the town of Chester who are really hoping that we could put some teeth into these.
And we are. I know everybody wants this done like overnight.
Yesterday, but I understand that, I understand that.
It is a process, the state does not make it easy.
And even creating that ordinance took us, oh my word, a couple years at least. Interesting, because when I was reading it, I went, oh, this one was probably created because someone went naked down the street. And another one is totally towards noise. And, you know, so we could have a general one, I suppose, but there's a lot of different aspects to it from.
When I read the Burlington and I read the Woodstock, it didn't have anything to do with what I was just talking about.
Right.
And I think that we've had some issues at different times come up with loud music late at night and coming from a house or someone like that. And so then I started thinking, well, that may be based on these, that's what the public nuisance is all about.
Well, and smell.
Yeah.
So to address Arnie's question about what's the point, what's the purpose for any kind of nuisance ordinance? I think we have to go back to the master plan and what we see as what is going to be good for Chester. How does Chester present itself to tourism, people who may want to move here? And what do we want to see on the green? I mean, that's what we're promoting, not just the green, but the downtown area. And so if we have a nuisance ordinance in place that allows for us to be discriminating in what kind of businesses operate, you know, certainly I don't think we want to see, I won't bring up any particular industries, but you can think of, based on some of the nuisance ordinances that have been presented to us, you can think of some businesses that would promote those kinds of things that I don't think we would see as suitable for the town of Chester, especially since we have a school right next door to the green, we have churches right next door to the green, we have a public library right next door to the green. So the point is that if we're not thinking about how do we want to present ourselves as a town of Chester to people either visiting or thinking about moving here, then we could end up with any, the downtown area looking in ways that we don't want it to look. And so I think, you know, not singling out any specific type of business or activity, I think we need to be thoughtful about how we are going to maintain the character, the wholesome character of the downtown area, the green area, for the future. And so what does that look like? I don't know whether any of these proposed or these ordinances that we've gotten examples of, how that's going to work. But I think, Arnie, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's what I'm thinking about is how do we maintain the quaint character of the town of Chester for the future?
So I understand, I understand what you're saying there, Lee, but I also wonder if that's more of, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I take that more of a zoning concept than having anything to do with ordinances. And as I read through, as I read through all of those, they concerned me about what we would necessarily be implementing in town if we were to create all those ordinances in town. And we certainly shouldn't be in, I don't want us to be creating ordinances, if we're creating ordinances, we should be following them, not saying we're not going to. So if we do this, then we're enforcing that. And as I read through some of them and it talked about whistling loudly or singing or obviously in stow, got a little more graphic as to what they were referring to.
But there's also laws against that, right? Aren't there?
In Vermont, they pretty much, I think, stated the law, from what I understand, inside the ordinance.
But there are.
My point is, to what Arnie was just saying, I don't necessarily see a problem to the point of creating ordinances on any of those things. If we're talking about cannabis and we're concerned about locations, I feel that that's more of a zoning issue than ordinance.
And we can't address that through zoning, that's the problem. The state has taken any.
Correct, because we would be doing it after the establishment. So I understand that as well. I just think it's, again, as we talked about a little earlier tonight, making sure we have all of our homework done before we move on things, just creating a bunch of ordinances, I think, is something to be cautious of.
Well, and your zoning regulations do have, you know, the planning commission, when they set forth the zoning regulations, there are performance standards in there that do cover odor, noise, parking for any business that goes through a conditional use. So you do have, you do have a layer of review through zoning, if that helps. Tim has his hand up.
The one thing we have to be extremely careful of is that we don't single out cannabis in this, in any which way whatsoever. The state has made it very clear on that, and I think we should make sure that we're clear on that also, that the reason for even having this discussion is not because of cannabis. It's because of a general type question that we had regarding nuisance ordinances because nuisance ordinances were mentioned so many times in the documents that were given to us regarding all this cannabis stuff. So it was more for an informational thing to learn about. When I read it, I'm looking through documents that they, on the guidance for cannabis, and I keep saying, well, nuisance ordinance, this, that, and the other thing. And I know what it means, but I really had no idea what they were talking about. With these examples, it gave me an idea of what it could be used or how it could be used for very specific things. That being said, we can't do anything specific to cannabis. I mean, that's, I think if we even talk about it in a way sometimes, if something comes forward through this board as an ordinance, it might come back in a lawsuit against us because we're maybe directed an ordinance or a statement that was, you know, specifically towards cannabis. I think we're past that point. We're, it's, the people at the town voted it, they voted it overwhelmingly, I mean, by quite a margin. And anything that we do as far as nuisance ordinances, I think, have to be extremely general that apply to all retail, to all people and all citizens.
Well, and.
Well, I raised my hand. I guess I actually, when I was reading about these ordinances, and then we had the information from the Woodstock and from Burlington, it mentioned nothing about anything other than the way they've set up what is considered a nuisance or making that into an ordinance. And they have the whereas, the whole, the regular, and I couldn't figure out how that was applying to us to begin with. So I didn't even go to the cannabis piece, that's a whole different ballgame. I was going to, that's why I said, was this based, did we get this based on? I was going to, that's why I said, was this based, did we get this based on what we have on some properties in our town? That being a nuisance.
Yeah.
So that's where I was coming from, didn't have anything to do with the other.
A lot of these nuisance regulations, it seems, were based on public safety and the good of the community, of the collective, as far as noise and other items and things like that. And that was, seems like that was the justification for a lot of it and stuff.
Right. I agree with you.
Which is, you know-
From what we read.
Which is not vague, but it's open to interpretation, that's for sure. And when you get to ordinances that are open to interpretation, it seems like you're looking for a court case.
Ah, that's exactly what I was gonna say. You're looking for trouble. You're looking for something that may not even exist on that kind of a level in our town.
Well, I, I'm not picking a fight here, Arnie, but I need to take issue with something that you said, that we can't even have a hint of talking about cannabis at all, relative to regulations or nuisance or ordinances or whatever, because I, the reason why we're talking about this is because of the whole cannabis issue. And I think that if we can't talk about it for fear of a lawsuit down the road, then we're kind of just kicking the stool out from under us, and we don't have the ability to have a discussion. And, I mean, you all know my feelings on this issue. Did it pass? Yes. Did I want it to pass? No, of course not. But does that mean I can't voice my opinion anymore? No. The answer is no. I should be able to. Now, do I feel that the state is being realistic in their handling of this whole issue, as far as timing goes, as far as how much responsibility we as a town select board members have? I don't think so. I mean, I'm taking issue with that, but I think that we need to be really careful not to hamstring ourselves because we're afraid of some lawsuit. And I agree with you, Arnie, I don't want to go down that road, and I don't want to be in a position, I don't want to put the town in a position where somebody says, well, you did this all because of cannabis, and you can't do that because the guy says you can't do that. But on the other hand, I'm representing the town of Chester, sitting in this seat, and I know that not everybody in the town of Chester is feeling the same way that some people are. So how do I represent that group, or how am I representing my constituents in this matter if I can't talk about it? And I'm not saying that you guys are making it so I can't, I'm just saying that I don't want us to hamstring ourselves in this particular issue. That being said, I agree with you that a lot of the ordinances that we've gotten examples for from a nuisance standpoint don't really apply to this issue, and I'm not sure they're going to be applicable at all, because we're not seeing those problems, so why are we trying to solve something that we don't have a problem with? The question I have is can we have an honest conversation about what is good for the town of Chester, what fits in with the master plan, and how do we present ourselves to the outside world as they either travel through or look at living here in a wholesome manner that we're trying to promote ourselves for? So my two cents on this issue, I think you guys all know where I stand on it, whether we should be pursuing the nuisance ordinance thing, I don't think so. It's not going to get us anywhere, because the state has made it very clear to us that we can't regulate anything. We can put out guidance, we can put out guidance, whatever, it's not really going to be anything that has any teeth to it.
Maybe I was a little too harsh when I said we can't speak about it at all, and that's not what I meant.
Yeah, no.
And we're having a discussion now.
I think, I think the issue is we don't want to connect the two directly, is it, but when we look at nuisance, I didn't understand in the beginning, and maybe, and this didn't help me, how, and I'm not opposed to having a nuisance ordinance, but I think some of these things, like defacing a building, I think there's laws against that. Urination and defecation, I mean, you know, there's a lot in here that none of us want to see happen in Chester, I think. But A, are there laws already in place? And then the noise control, do we have things in zoning? And how are we enforcing that? So unless we want a nuisance ordinance that just covers everything, which I don't think we want to do, I think some kind of direction on what kind of things we want to have in it would be a good place to start. Like visual, I think a lot of visual things we have from the salvage yard zoning, but, you know, do we want something about smells, noise? Like, I don't know, there was a lot to this.
Oh, yeah, there is.
There's a lot.
But I think there are, I'm reading it and going, well, why, like, some of this, I'm just sure that there's a law.
They're just examples of public nuisance, that's what towns are doing for public nuisance.
I just, and I don't disagree with the smell thing, but at the same time, just to throw it out there, someone complaining about the smell of the newer-
Green mountain turnpike.
-may turn into what we're dealing with. And if you simply have in there that it's an annoyance, okay, now all the dairy farms in town are in violation of our ordinance because they smell.
Well, you have to do that too in a springtime.
That's like, I think we just need to be very careful about that, because-
Oh, absolutely.
Well, again, I don't think we need to address problems that-
And I don't think we need to.
They don't exist yet. I agree with that.
I think we have the things on our table that we know are issues that we need to deal with. We don't need to be-
Looking for something.
Getting ahead of ourselves on a lot of it.
There was also in one of the emails from Susan from VLCT, it sounds like there is some kind of a training, educational opportunity that they are all putting together.
It's in the works because of, because of, you know, whether it's related to it, it's because of the cannabis discussion, because it did come up in so many places, that word and statute, that the VLCT now is going to have some workshops and some discussions and engage the towns and talk to people about this issue in general, to see how it applies, what it applies to, how it works. So maybe we just kind of sit back and let them-
It sounded like it was coming soon. I will be in Montpelier at a board meeting tomorrow, so I can certainly see if there's a timeline.
I would gather that a lot of these ordinances were reactionary to things, you know, they had a complaint about a lot of things happening in town, okay, how could we stop it or slow it down? And I, to me, there's no problem. I don't want to try to fix something that's not, that I don't have an issue with yet.
No, we fix something that isn't an issue, and all of a sudden you have a lot more issues.
You got that right.
Right. Law of unintended consequences.
Anybody else have any comments regarding our public nuisance ordinance discussion? Any hands up? There were some hands, maybe I missed them, I can't tell sometimes. They're gone.
I had my hand up, Arnie, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Barry, go ahead.
All right. I have been represented by the ACLU three times, believe it or not, once for my giant mailbox down on Cape Cod, and, you know, a lot of times, and what I'm hearing here, with all due respect, is I think throughout the history of people, sometimes we try to regulate things through a moral compass, and that's a difficult thing to do, and I don't, I don't, I mean, I get it, and I know why people want to do that, and I respect it, but that's something that doesn't fly so much in our country the way that it's made up. And often, if you look at, if you look at the Larry Flynt movie, for example, some of that free speech arguments that they made, they actually had the church on the same side with them because of, you know, being able to practice free speech and freedom of religion and all these sorts of things. So, you know, without getting too philosophical or esoteric or whatever the wordage is, you know, it's, it isn't the government's job to regulate morality, and, you know, being on the planning board, we talk about some of these things, and a lot of this stuff comes down to economics too, so we're not, we're not going to have an issue with, you know, dancing in Chester, because no one's going to go there. So, you know, I think it's obvious that this is, this is kind of an angle to do something with respect to the cannabis issue, and if it's a moral aspect that we're trying to regulate, that's going to be an issue. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Barry.
Can I respond to that for a second, please? So Barry, to your point, I appreciate what you brought up, but the only thing we regulate is morality, your morality or somebody else's morality. So you can't have rules and regulations without having some kind of moral basis on which those rules and regulations are made. So I take a little bit of issue with that. It's whether or not it's your morality or my morality or somebody else's, that's all we regulate.
Lee, I would, I would think that I'd try to keep the morals out of it as much as I can, because I really think some things don't deserve to be regulated morally, like car registrations and a few other things. I mean, there's a lot to it, and we can have a discussion about-
Yeah, like he said, it's a philosophical discussion, and if you start talking about morals, it's not, is it Judeo-Christian morals, or Muslim morals, or Hindu morals, or atheistic morals? It is morals. You have a set of morals, I have a set of morals. Whether or not we agree on those morals is a different story, but for the, to not, and again, it's a philosophical issue for you to say, I don't have any. You do, you just may not recognize them.
Oh, I know, I do. I hope I do.
Yes, exactly.
I hope we all do.
Yes, exactly.
But I, you know, not, I'm sorry, but, and that's my point, that's what, that's what the American Civil Liberties Union, that's why they can get on both sides of these issues, because what they try to protect is people's freedoms, so we all have the freedom to believe what we want to believe freely, and that's how that works, that's a difficult part of it, because if you just stand on one side of it and don't let the other people have the other side, then we lose our freedoms. And that's, that's the nature of it. So that's, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the line, and that's why you get opposing views of supporting each other on these issues, because we're protecting our ability to have our freedom and have our views.
And that's why we have such a great democratic republic, because we can have these debates in a civil manner.
So instead of a public nuisance ordinance, maybe we should have a moral nuisance ordinance, so we can make sure everybody's on the same page.
That would be pretty boring.
We're not advocating that either.
I said it first, I said it first. I'm kidding.
Well, it sounds like we're going to let this one slide for a while, and see what the VLCT is going to bring forward.
Did we solicit these, this information from someone?
What?
To be, we did.
Yeah, we asked for examples of public nuisance ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
And boy, can they range.
They do, and I think that's kind of the point is-
Well, and one was, I think I read something about a snow blower.
Yeah.
I was like, holy cow. I really don't think we should regulate how loud your snow blower is or yours.
Well, if it's 2:00 in the morning, you might want to.
That's exactly right.
Unless you're the poor guy, that that's the only time he can get out and blow his smoke.
I know.
I mean, you know, like-
The discussion continue on.
But I don't know, and we're back to that, I don't know if we have a lot of complaints about snow blowers at 2:00 PM or 2:00 AM in the morning, so maybe we should just leave it alone until there is a problem.
Exactly.
Yeah.
A lot of morals are being a good neighbor, being a good person, and that, I think, helps with a lot of the issues that come with everything else.
I don't know how kids in Woodstock are allowed to go play in the street.
Right. They aren't. So I'll share any information allegedly.
Sure.
I'm so glad I wasn't the only one who was totally dazed.
I did think they were humorous.
We're going to move on to a solar field discussion.
Our solar, well, our solar field.
I guess we exercised our right.
I have not signed it. I need your permission to sign it.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion. Do you need a motion?
I would like a motion, yes.
I'll make a motion that-
Does Arnie need to sign it, or you? It's me.
Okay, that Julie is allowed to sign the intent letter, or the exercise-
To exercise a notice of purchase option for the solar field.
Right. Just set it like that.
I'll second it.
I will give it to Lee.
So Heather's the motion, and then the second discussion on this. So this starts a timeframe of 120 days, I believe, we have to get a appraisal of the property.
Appraisal. And then after that appraisal, we have 30 days to get out of this. So because we're doing this doesn't mean that we're agreeing to buy it.
We still have an out.
Yeah, we still have an out.
If so, we choose, because there are a lot of other questions that we have, that, Lee, you're familiar with, the output, whether we could, how do we treat the other people that were attached to it? Is it more than we use? Is it less than we use? I mean, there's a lot of questions that we have.
There is, and a lot of those answers are coming in, so then we can sit down and really start to work, you know, work through the details once we get all the data.
And just to give you a little insight, so Julie passed some information on to me, and I did a little bit of research, but basically, this is a much larger solar field than I initially anticipated or thought it was. It's a 500-kilowatt system instead of 150-kilowatt system, and it's actually producing quite well, better than I would have anticipated. The amount of power it makes, well, so far since August 27th of 2015, it's made 5.38 gigawatt hours of power, which is a lot of power. And there's an online portal you can go to, and I can share the link with you if you want, that shows power production on a daily, weekly, monthly, lifetime basis, and a couple of days ago, we had a perfect day where the irradiance was this nice smooth curve, and the power production was this nice smooth curve, and it just, it's making a lot of The couple of things I found out was that there are over, I think there's over 2,000 panels on the site, or 1,500, I can't remember exactly, and the inverters are string inverters, they're three-phase inverters, so it's not just one giant inverter, or two giant inverters would be very expensive to replace. It's a single unit, if one goes, you pull it out, you pop another one, and they're like $3,000 or $4,000 to replace them. The warranty on the panels is 10-year manufacturer's warranty for the product, and then a 25-year linear warranty on the production, and it goes down by, you know, 3%, 0.3% to 0.5% per year. So they're warranted after 25 years, be making 85% of the nameplate rating. Each of the panels out there, I think, is around 330 watts, so, you know, after 25 years, it's still going to be making 85% of the amount of power. The inverters are warranted for five years, they purchased an additional five years, so it's a 10-year warranty for each inverter. You can't extend that out to 20 years. I'm not sure what the cost is, or whether the, whether it's something that we want to look into. My guess is no, because it's not a giant inverter, it's a string inverter, for short money, you can replace it. It's probably not worth that. But the solar field makes, and I'm drawing from my memory here, it's like 800,000 kilowatt hours a year. So normally, when I do a proposal to somebody, I say, you have a 10,000-watt system, and it's going to make, it's going to make 12,500 kilowatt hours a year, so it's a multiplier of about 1.25%. I did the math on the solar field, and it's up to 1.6 multiplier on that, so it's very, very good compared to what expectations are. So more information will be coming, Julie's trying to get information from GMP as to how much power we as a town actually use.
But that's a good question.
Yeah.
It's an important piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an important-
But regardless, even if we don't use all the power, there's still the ability to sell the leftover power and bring money into the coffers. So the other issue is the appraisal, because we're supposed to find a, excuse me, mutually agreed upon appraiser to do this. I reached out a couple of my contacts and found out that there's a guy in Burlington that did an appraisal for the solar field, excuse me, that Julie and I talked to you guys about in Heinsberg, and so we're getting some more information about that possibility of having that appraisal done. But more information is coming, like I said, and we'll present all of it to you, but just from my initial investigation and looking at the data, looks like it's working well.
And then I have a meeting next week with Kelsey Woods. She's going to explain to me and talk to me about, you know, the management side of, if we are selling power, you know, if we keep the town of Pittsburgh, town of St. John's Mary, if they keep drawing from this field, for whatever reason, that that stays in place, what's involved in that. So her and I are going to have a meeting and kind of go over those details. So her and I are going to have a meeting and kind of go over those details. I also want to talk a little more, and I've given you all the agreement, the actual solar agreement. I've got to look through that, I've got to have some conversations with Jim about, are we obligated to keep giving power to those two contracts? I believe that, I don't think that we do, but I need to talk to him about the legal piece of that first.
It'd be interesting that if we were able to be a little more flexible with that, we offer it to our citizens in town, instead of somebody in St. Johnsbury or wherever else, and any excess power gets.
The schools.
The schools, or yeah, or whatever happens and stuff, and to help everybody that's local, as far as it goes. I mean, the estimate that they had in there from seven years ago of the appraisal, and I don't know where they got those numbers from, but it was around, the seven-year cost to buy the field was around $900,000. I don't know if that's high, if that's low, where they got that number from, whether it's a valid number or not. I would think it's going to go up no matter what in those seven years, but once you do all the math, it's going to come down to money. How much does it cost? How much you're making, how much you're spending, how much you're going to save? And if that all works out, we could be saving huge money on our utility bills, and helping the town and school and everyone else around.
And it may take a while to reap the real benefits of the purchase, but if the long-term benefit, 85% at 25 years, that's a long time to reap back a lot of money.
What I tell my customers is that, depending on the system and how much power they use, payback time is usually anywhere between seven and 10 years to completely pay for the system, and then it's just gravy after that. So what I tell them is, you're pre-buying your electricity, much like you pre-buy your oil for the heating season, you pre-buy your electricity for the next 30 years, you pay for it in 10, and you're, it's just free power after that. So same thing here, it's going to, I think it will be a decent investment for the town because it will cut a major expense that we have for power and electricity, especially the treatment plant.
It's interesting to be having this discussion, because I remember seven or eight years ago, when Mr. Lindsay was on the board, it wasn't an unanimous decision to go this route. We had, there was a lot of controversy as far as even getting involved with this in the first place. So it's kind of, it's good to look back and sometimes say, "Wow, you made a good decision," you know? Or it seems like it.
A lot of things change in seven years.
Well, and once we get, so once we get all the data and get all the numbers, I'll work up a kind of a cost, a benefit cost analysis. I know Bill has wanted to help with that, so we can kind of work up what that all looks like, once I get all the pieces in play.
I'd love to see it used with some of our town businesses, i.e. the schools, the library, you know, places that benefit directly the people who live in the town.
That's right.
Our electric plow trucks.
Do we have electric plow trucks?
No, we do not.
I might be a little ways off.
He's a visionary.
Yeah, well, wait till the next flood season comes.
Maybe sidewalk plows, so, I don't know. Bill, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the board for going forth with this. I must admit, Arnie, we chatted a little bit at the planning board meeting about going forth with the benefit of solar power. It was not an easy time serving on the board at that time, and we all took our licks in different ways. However, we've all remembered, have remained friends, even with the tough decisions that had to be made at that time, and I'm glad we did go forward. I used an analogy at the time, that may sound a little silly in a way, but it was about antennas for TVs. I used to have to commute about 45 minutes to New York City. And some of the sections that we went through were not the most prestigious sections alongside the train stations. And yet the antennas that were on the top of these buildings were absolutely amazing. If you were to go through that section today, there are no antennas. So I really believe that electronics will improve, and I think we all know from even current news, that energy power is probably going to come from solar, if we can afford to live on this earth. I built a home recently, and I did propane. It was the best deal at the time, as opposed to fueler. The payback at my age is too long for solar. I wouldn't live for the benefit, but there are many people who will live for the benefit, and I think it has a way to go. So maybe the solar panel may be ugly at the moment, which was, in many cases, people's concern about the towns having, being hooked into solar. But I believe, looking at a solar panel now, I've never heard a comment. So I'm really glad the board will pursue this. We have two schools in this town alone. I don't know what their electric bills are. I'm sure we could find out. And if we're going to sell our, to someplace else, why don't we sell it to ourselves and save money? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Bill, I'll be in touch with the data that we're collecting.
Good.
Anybody else? Anything else on the solar field discussion?
Pretty exciting.
I think so, too.
I think it is, too. I think it's going to be a win for sure, at the end of it all. I can't see the board, I don't see any hands up.
I don't see any hands.
No. All right.
Their mics are on.
Next item on our agenda is just some housekeeping. Liquor license approval from Smitty's Market. And this is for a class, second-class license in the state of Vermont. And in your package, there's a little more information than usual. There were some concerns, but they have been addressed by Smitty's, and the state is okay with the responses that they've had regarding this issue and this license. I mean, the chief's okay with everything, the usual questions that we have and stuff, everything's all right, everything's, the education part, if it's up to snuff, and everything that's of a concern to us is okay.
And I've spoke with legal counsel today, so we are, we are good.
Okay.
And we don't need motions.
No, not for these, no. Next item on our agenda is our annual financial plan and certificate of compliance. This is some paperwork for the state, Julie.
Every year.
Regarding our roads and how much we spend on them, just to make sure we're always meeting the bare minimum that we spend on them? I believe so.
Yep.
Do we need a motion for this?
You don't, you just sign it. It requires a signature of the board.
We're just going to, are we going to sign this one, each of, I mean, one?
Original coming, yep.
Yep, okay.
It's got right here, right?
That one, and then this one.
I have these, and I don't think.
Thank you, Arnie.
Okay.
Sorry.
We thought we had more than one. It's a one, two, and three. That's a total? 74, 12, and 2?
Yes.
There's two places.
Well, then, class four is counted.
Oh.
When you add class four.
Okay, I must bring it up there.
It brings it up, yep.
74, 84.
That's all we're paid on.
I should know that number.
It's all we're paid on.
89, 90 miles of road.
And when you add the class four, we're.
Yeah.
Can I put the dates on here, Arnie, if you mind?
You can, go ahead. Or I can do it tomorrow, whatever.
So we're spending more than $300 per mile, I guess, huh?
Yes, we do.
That's the minimum? Maybe up in Victory, Vermont, or someplace like that, where there's 10 miles of dirt road, they have to, we have to spend a few more bucks this year. Sorry.
All set, yep.
And a cemetery deed.
Are you going to request not to sit by me?
Sometimes you can tell your age while you start seeing a cemetery deed, and you know everybody.
Thank you, too, for doing the campaign. Thank you, too, for doing the campaign. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, that's the. What year were they in? Damn. All set. Future agenda items, new business.
The only thing I had for new bit, oh, go ahead.
No, no, no. Well, I just wanted to say, are you going to set up a meeting with the select board, the two select board members and three community members for this local cannabis control commission? How are we going to do that?
You wanted it, you guys asked for it to be on the next agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where you'll interview and then do the resolution.
Perfect.
Yep, I'll have it for the next meeting.
All right.
And I would propose that we have maybe a discussion about, not a deep discussion, but maybe just what our thoughts are on the police advisory committee, and what Jim Baker thinks maybe the timeline is, so that we could just inform people that it's not, we haven't forgotten about it.
Okay.
I think so. I think we could do, even though we are waiting for more information, I think, I agree with, I think it's also possible to start this process.
Right.
Because it's going to take a while, no matter what.
And, yeah, I agree with that.
At least to get the information out there and get that process going, and we'll develop it as we go.
Or at least ask the entire board, is this what we want?
We could talk about it.
Is this our goal? I mean, I don't know if we're voting on it, I don't know how we do that, but if we had it on, and we were, maybe we were all committed to doing it, if we are, maybe that would be.
That's fine, I can put it on the agenda.
Good for people to know.
We could definitely have it as an agenda item, and then we can have a little more in-depth discussion about what direction we want to go, and how we want to deal with this, and what we, how we want to go forward, for sure.
And I think last time we discussed it, it was, we wanted an advisory. Remember, we had others from different towns.
As opposed to oversight, yes.
Besides oversight, or other than oversight. But we didn't put that in stone, but maybe we could rehash that. That's what we were all thinking, right?
Right. Well, the direction I was given when we talked about this the last time was that we were going to wait until the assessment was completed. So that's why I waited until now we have.
No, it was. I mean, it was our discussion that we had.
I followed the direction I was given. I'm comfortable with that.
Well, and by the way, there's also been COVID in that timeframe.
Exactly.
There's a lot of things that have been happening.
Well, and we needed the budget to pass, it's, anyway, I think.
Real quick, for my clarity, I want to confirm, so Jim Baker is retired Colonel Baker?
Yes.
And if we're going to have that as an actual agenda item and not old business, could you find out from him, and then from whoever else you need to, if we really should be waiting for that to be completed before we move on or not?
Well, I had a very lengthy, I've had several conversations with Jim.
I know, you know, I'm somewhat new to this topic.
Yep, yep, nope.
I just want to make an informed vote.
Yep.
So we can have that discussion.
Would it be, would he be able to come to the meeting, or would you advise that?
I, what my next task for him is, so he is on vacation next week. He is wrapping up two other towns, and will be available for us the end of May. I have been tasked, and I can certainly put this together, and you guys can look at it, I mean, it was the direction I was given before, but we can certainly revisit it, make sure it's still where you want to go, of what I want accomplished through this assessment. And I had already shared that document way back. So he wants me to give him that direction of what it is we're looking to have accomplished through this assessment. Him and I have talked through it, but I'm going to kind of put it in writing, so he can then write up his proposal for cost, and then give them the okay, and he would get going. When him and I have talked, we talked even today, even this morning, is when he let me know he was going to be on vacation, and that he would be able to start the end of May, we talked about the advisory committee. And what he had said is that the advisory committee discussion could be a part of this whole assessment. I mean, his first question to me is one I couldn't answer. Does the majority of your community want an advisory committee? I've heard from one person that wants an advisory committee. That's the only thing I've heard from. I don't know that our community wants an advisory committee. This is one of those pieces that this assessment is going to talk about, because one of the tasks that I said I wanted this to complete, what, to be a part of, was getting the community involved. What does the community want from its police department? We're going to start that conversation internally on May 26th with our first session, but this assessment would be doing that, too. Jim will be doing activities where he can hear from the community, and hear from our police officers. So I think by saying that we want a police advisory committee before the community has even told us we want one, is jumping ahead, where, I have heard from one person. Maybe you guys have heard from others. I don't know that. I am only going on what I've heard. Again, I'm not opposed to it. I can see great value in having an advisory committee. I can.
So.
But I'd like it guided.
So let's have this discussion, that we're starting right now.
I'll put it on the next agenda.
So we could talk about this a little more in-depth about how it's all going to work, and what direction we're going to be going, that's all.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we're all on the same pitch.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So this brings up another topic of discussion, not necessarily for an agenda, but just how do we, as a town, get information out to the community, and how does the community give us their input? And I'm not sure how we do that. You know, we're talking about the, some of the things for the new public safety building, and the breakfasts that are happening. I saw something on Facebook today, so there's a little bit, very slow transfer of information, but how do we reach the entire community? And I think that's something that maybe we can talk about, or maybe we leave it up to Julie to figure that out, but it's an issue that needs to be addressed on some level as far as how we take the pulse of the community on issues like this.
Well, and on this, it's, we're going to be hosting some community events.
Right.
Well, and also, even having it on the agenda again, because it hasn't been on the agenda for a long time, is the reason I'd like it on there, even if Julie, and we say just what we've said tonight, at least people know that it's on the agenda, and people can come and engage.
Right. But do people think that they have the ability to do that? Are we asking, or, you know, soliciting comments? I don't know. That's the thing, is people may have some kind of thought on it, but they don't know where to, who to tell, or how to get that viewpoint correct.
I think that whenever we have anything on the agenda, we welcome input from our citizens and stuff.
Right.
And so even though it's a meeting in public, we allow the public to participate to a big extent. I mean, there's different towns that run it different ways, and there's, you could limit discussion and timeframes and everything else. I think we're pretty open when it comes to making sure that people help us with our discussions and stuff. So just having anything on the agenda welcomes people to come and speak, to talk about it, to speak their mind and stuff. So when it is put on an agenda, I think that's part of it. But we always, over the years, have struggled trying to get people involved in things, and especially after a decision's made, people turn around and say, "Well, I didn't hear about it, I didn't know."
from your ambulance service? What do you want to see from your police department? What does, what does that look like for you and your community? So hopefully, you know, we're planning, this is the first one, we're hoping to do it quarterly for a year, but this will be the first one.
I think it's a great idea.
I do, too.
I really am happy we're doing it.
Yeah.
And we should include Town Highway in one of these, too.
Huh?
Town Highway.
We could. We're going to start with public safety, because we figured it's the new building, those are the services that are struggling the most in our culture. Those are the three services that are struggling the most. And certainly, police is at the top of that list. So this is an opportunity, instead of isolating police, it's this, this is our public safety division. Here it is.
Sounds great.
Sounds good.
First of many, and hopefully will. And that was a recommendation that Jim had given me a while ago, was go ahead and start that, go ahead and start those meetings. So...
Well, and especially with the new building.
Exactly.
It's perfect timing.
Exactly, exactly.
I saw the fire academy down there was training last week with the...
Great.
It's nice to be able to host an organization and have some pride in the building where you're having it, as opposed to, I mean, nothing against the town garage, but it's the town garage, you know, it's not like a public safety building, so.
So I have another que, are we?
No, future, new business, agenda items for the future.
Well, I'm just wondering if any monitoring of speed had been able to be done based on what we heard from the folks at our last select board meeting?
For Route 10.
Route 10. And I know that it's a state highway, but I just didn't know if we've had any presence out there.
No, I asked for, we do have presence out there, yes. Our officers are out there.
Okay, so are they bringing back information?
You, you updated us at the last meeting and said that they'd been out there, and that a study had been done recently, and that you were waiting to get the results from that, and that paving was not, they were not rebuilding the whole road.
Oh, no, no, I knew that.
Correct, correct. Regional planning had done speed studies, I have asked for those, but I haven't heard of, so I'll follow up.
Okay.
But yes, Lee, we are, we are out there.
That's how old they are, too.
Good, no, that's great.
I think they just did it.
I just wanted to ask, and then the other thing, we've got this wonderful letter for the Chester snowmobile club, and I know our agenda is always on our webpage and that kind of thing, but, you know, they wrote this lovely letter, and they're thankful to all the people who have allowed them to go on the properties with their snowmobiles, and they're good, on June 18th, they're going to, at the gazebo at the recreation center on Lover's Lane, they're going to have a barbecue.
Nice.
So hopefully, I don't know, Matt might get that word out, how we get that word out?
I think they send, they send that out to the people that give them.
Especially to the landowners.
Correct, it's for the landowners.
Okay, excellent.
Yep.
And we're behind it, because we're...
Correct, right, right.
Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. I guess that's it for new business, I know. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Yes.